... specific organization includes planning local community outreach efforts such as Santa's Toy Shop, which provides holiday assistance to families in need, the annual back-to-school giveaway, and serving as the ambassador for Wish Upon A Prom, which assists more than 900 New Jersey teens and adults and young adults with prom attire. Outstanding dedication to serving others in the community and the greater Asbury Park area has been featured by Dela Cruz from News 12 and celebrated locally and nationally, having been awarded a community service award from the Sheraton Kings, New Bethel Church, the White House and Women of the State Community Change Make Girl Award, and a proclamation from the City of Asbury Park as one of its 2017 Honors Honorize. And I think Arnold just gave you a proclamation as well. Freeholder Arnold just gave a proclamation as well. Mayor Moore in Asbury Park City Council hereby acknowledge Charisse Lyles for her many accomplishments and her dedication to improving the lives of youth and families in our community and our state. Do you want to say?
I just want to say thank you to everyone. I've been here as a member for 14 years now. Everyone's just been so welcoming. I just love collaborating with Asbury Park and just seeing how can I be a part of this community. It's important to be a part of this community.
Okay, Chiquita, is that your turn? Okay. And I also, I'll be competing for the national title next week in Washington. Yeah, no, we thank you.
The second proclamation, we have a proclamation recognizing the City of Asbury Park as a stigma-free community.
Is there anybody here who's here?
No. Is this Pamela Major?
No.
The first application is from the Salvation Army to do a brief concert in Bradley Park on August 11th. Next is the end of summer kids' dance, Springwood Park, macro bites on August 29th. Third application is the Mind Travel, the Silent Headphones Piano Concert. And just as a point of clarification on this application, on page two, it mentioned that there is an admission charge. It's not an admission charge, but if you want the headphones to be able to participate in the concert, then that's what the charge is for, $25 to $35. But the beach will be accessible to everyone. Next is the Jersey Shore Rescue 5K Race on October 30th. And the following seven applications are offered across an orange for wedding receptions in Kennedy Park. And the last six applications are for wedding ceremonies. First one is in St. John's, on St. John's Island, and the other five are on the beach. Are there any questions on these applications? Nope. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. We are now on to presentations. The first item to be presented, we have a FileBank Document Management Presentation by Joe Delarue, Director of Information Technology.
I put together a little slideshow for everybody to be able to follow along. I'm here to discuss FileBank, a document management solution that would benefit the City of Asbury Park. And first things first, let's define what document management is. It's a system or process used to capture, track, and store electronic documents such as PDFs, word processing files, and digital images of paper-based content. So essentially for us, it means going from what we currently have on the right, where we have files and banker's boxes full of files all throughout City Hall because we're just running out of space, to getting to what's over on the right, a nice organized spot to store all of our files and to be able to access all those files online. And the way that we get there is we enter into an agreement with FileBank, and they work with our administration and our department heads, and they come in stages and they take our files back to their warehouse in Oakland, New Jersey in a truck. And when the files get to the warehouse, they're all barcoded and scanned. And when they're scanned, they go through something called optical character recognition, where the text of that document is changed from text on a piece of paper to something that could be searched online. So what that basically means is, once these documents are processed by FileBank, they go into an online portal where you could just search a certain date, a keyword, a particular council meeting, and be able to reproduce that document. And that can be done from anywhere in the world with an internet connection. So an example would be an inspector in the field for code enforcement or construction, if they were performing an inspection and they needed to access a permit or some file associated with that property, instead of having to come back to the office or call somebody in the office and get a physical copy of that document, they could just access it right from their tablet in the field, which would save a lot of time. A couple of the other advantages of the system is they assist with retention and destruction. They follow state and federal guidelines for destroying these documents when they meet their end of their retention schedule. A lot of the documents that we have scattered throughout City Hall, we just, there's just too many to know exactly when they could be destroyed. So they'll actually go through them for us and say, okay, you're, you have X amount of boxes that could be destroyed now, and they work directly with the state to get the approval and fill out all of the associated paperwork. Another feature is there's a picture of a little scanner up here, and what would happen is these scanners would go throughout the building, and instead of taking a file that you're working on currently and filing it away somewhere, you would scan it into the system. What the system does is it converts the text of that document automatically and indexes the document based on certain fields, so for example, a purchase order number or resolution number. It knows how to categorize these documents based on the way we tell it to. So 10 years down the line, if you needed to access a certain document from tonight's council meeting, for example, you could just search FileBank or a date, and it would know which files to produce, and you'd be able to just share them or reprint them or redact them or whatever you need to do right online instead of actually having to search through physical files somewhere. They offer a same-day delivery service. Let's say you just need a document to be produced or you need an original copy. You don't have to worry about it being locked away somewhere in Oakland, New Jersey because they have a service, which you request a document online, and they will either mail it to you or they'll physically bring it to you the same day if you need it. Some of the benefits to the city, a lot of these I touched on, but organization will be able to free up physical space in the building. Our files will always be secure and backed up. We won't have to worry about a, you know, God forbid, a fire or a flood destroying any of our documents. They'll all be in one central location, organized and barcoded for easier access. It'll help productivity as we no longer have to go through different files and offices and stairwells to try to find where our files are. And you could easily just produce digital copies of these documents and share them from anywhere, such as out in the field like I mentioned earlier. And cost savings, the city currently pays for some storage units, about $16,000 a year. All those can be canceled because all those documents would be digitized and be available at your fingertips. And again, department employee productivity, because instead of having to go around to different offices searching for files, everything's available at your fingertips. Now, there's a lot of companies in New Jersey that do this type of service. Couple of the reasons we chose FileBank, you could see we've started receiving quotes for these type of services back in 2019. This is not something that we just threw together. It's been well researched. They've got all kinds of certifications. They work with Artemis, which is the, through the state in New Jersey for documents retention. And they provided a list of references, some of which we reached out to, and it was all positive. We didn't hear anything negative about this company from anybody. So that's basically what I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one.
Sure.
So as someone who digitizes documents every day for their day job, have we done an assessment on our files to make sure that the fields that we will need are all contained in these different jobs?
Yeah, so what FileBank has indicated is they'll come in and they'll talk to each department individually. So for example, for the finance department, they'll know where exactly the PO number is on our purchase orders, and they'll work with each department individually to make sure the fields that we care about are the ones that they're focusing on. So we have not done that yet because we haven't gotten specific, but that's something that would be part of the agreement with them.
Yeah, it's most important to do that ahead of time rather than try to fix it afterward. And I guess my second question, will there be different security levels for different areas of digitization?
Yes. Yes, so departments would only be able to access what they need. So for example, the clerk's office would probably have more access than everybody else, but somebody from, let's say, code enforcement wouldn't be able to access financial documents unless we specifically gave them that permission.
Okay.
How is this material backed up?
So once it's digitized, it goes into, on their server, but they're, they use something called Amazon Web Services. I'm not sure if you've heard of that before, but they back up to the cloud. They have data centers all throughout the United States that are automatically backed up. So if one site happened to go down, it's instantly replicated back through another site.
And secure?
Yes, they use two-factor authentication, which you might be familiar with. If you try to sign into your iCloud account, they say they have to text you a code for you to get in. So even if somebody has a password that got leaked or somebody was able to guess, you do have to use two-factor authentication to get in. They would either text or email you a code. So it's not something that somebody from the outside would be able to access.
What's the cost?
One time, initial setup's about $95,000. That's for them to come in, get all our documents, work with all the different departments to figure out what fields we need them to use. After that, it's about $15,000 to $20,000 a year. That includes everything, the scanners, all the labor, archiving, storage, barcoding, all of that.
So you said there were many companies that do this in New Jersey, and you picked this one. Did you go RFP or RFQ? I mean, how did you pick them?
They're...
State contract?
They're on a co-op that I worked with our purchasing agent with to make sure that we're a part of that co-op.
So once the initial assessment and setup is complete, then it's up to each department head to archive their files from there on in?
Yeah, so moving forward, we would end up in the same place if we just went back to what we currently do. So each department would have one of these scanners in their department, and it would be up to those employees and the department head to make sure that they took their files and scanned them. And once they scan them, they're in the system, they're searchable, they're, they go right up to the cloud, and they're available from anywhere.
And there's training sessions available for these department heads?
Yes, that's all included in the initial cost, as well as support. If there was something that went wrong, we can call them up, and support's included.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Joe.
We're on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman?
Sure. So I just want to let everyone know that National Night Out is Tuesday, August 3rd, Springwood Park, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., where everyone can come out, enjoy free food, music, and giveaways, enter a chance to win a bicycle, and meet all your neighbors.
The only thing I have is, a lot of people are not aware, the senior centers closed down, but they didn't know why. Last Thursday, at the senior center, there's three floors, and the third floor is owned by Interfaith Neighbors and its apartments. There was a fire in an apartment, and obviously all the sprinklers went off, obviously the fire department went there and used a lot of water. So their apartments are back open, but our senior center sustained major damage from water. So it's going to be closed for a couple weeks minimum, and, but just in case, you know, anybody out there in TV land and anybody here tonight didn't know that it had sustained a fire and the water damage is the reason the senior center is closed. And we're having our insurance people and everybody there as quick as possible to get it opened up as quick as possible. Thank you, that's all I have. Amy?
Somebody just mentioned that our thoughts or prayers are with Donna. Oh, so Donna's had a death in her, Donna, our city manager, had a death in her family, and just want to send our positive vibes and thoughts her way. Very sad day for her yesterday. The other thing I just want to mention is AP-TV won two awards. Volunteers Bruce Booker and Mike Sedano did two separate projects that they won JAG Awards, which are pretty prestigious in New Jersey. So just want to give them a big thank you on those two docu-series they did for AP-TV.
Matters from the Assistant City Man.
I have nothing at this time, Melody, thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney.
I have nothing at this time either, Melody, thank you.
We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker? Move to open.
Second.
All in favor? The meeting is now open to the public. Any members of the public who would like to be heard, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will have a three-minute time limit.
I know you like to read them around the 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. Thank you. Well, I think you outdid yourself. You wanted to do everything prim and proper, but two, three weeks ago now, it's three weeks, since you put the plaque in the park, but you didn't approve it until two weeks later. I don't think special events goes like that. Something happened here. That plaque has to be removed and put where it belongs, in the middle of the transportation center. That's where 810, 812 is. And I think the councilwoman knows that. She lives on Cookman Avenue. She knows that's where it belongs. I mean, I don't know what you're trying to do here, whether you're trying to, I know you, you're trying to do a good job, but it doesn't seem like that now. It seems like everything is like a cover-up. Or suddenly it takes, in one day, they get a permit to put up a plaque. I don't get it. And then two weeks later, the attorney should be the one that tells you that that's not right. It really isn't. And I don't know what you're going to do about it, but I like an answer. And the other thing is, I know the tax bills didn't go out, but I happened to call because I thought I misplaced it, and I found out what my taxes are going to be in this quarter. And I wasn't a happy camper. $500 is a lot of money. It's not your fault, I don't think, because I don't know all the details of the budget. But you got to get after the school. They have to trim their budget. You can't have $500 increases in one quarter. And you know that's, that's what it is. And I want an answer about that. And I want the attorney to tell me if it was proper, what happened three weeks ago when you put the plaque up and then you didn't approve it two weeks later. I want an answer to that. I don't seem to get any answers. And I don't like to make phone calls. But I, I think that you're heading, I don't know, they say two terms and you're out, and I think that's appropriate, because after that, things happen that shouldn't happen. And that's what's going on here. This is what's happening here. You're doing things, and then you're covering them up, and then it comes, then you have to approve them, and the city attorney has nothing to say tonight. And where's the city manager? It's not your fault. You're supposed to set policy, and she's supposed to perform. Well, nothing's working right. The scooters are going up and down the streets with little kids on them against traffic, and now you enforce the...
Time's up.
Rita, I'll start. Maybe you didn't hear, Donna Vera, the city manager, her mother passed away yesterday. That's why she's not here tonight. I think that's a good reason. If she was here, I'd probably fire her.
I understand that.
Okay, as far as the taxes, you're right, and we've posted it on Nextdoor, we posted it on our Facebook page, posted it on the city page. We couldn't send out the tax bills until the state certified the budget. So there's a grace period with the taxes. As far, when you get your tax bill, there'll be a letter in there, like we always do the third quarter, because people get the third quarter tax bill and they say, oh my, I multiply this times four, my taxes just went up $3,000. That's not it. The first and second were estimates, and this is like correcting the third and the fourth. So there'll be a letter in there explaining, there'll be a letter in there explaining that the city taxes went down, so and then...
They went up a hair for candy.
Well, it's better than nothing. At one point, at one point, it was an increase, but because of good work by, I'm going to say fiscal responsibility by the council and the administration, we were able to bring it in. It had a slight decrease in a year. Nobody knew what was happening with COVID. I mean, everybody was scrambling, from the governor to the senate, to the assembly, to the local municipalities, and to the county. I mean, nobody knew what they were going to do this year with their budget. And to go through last year and lose a lot of money in both of our utilities, and to lose a lot of money in mercantile licenses and everything that we waived for businesses to get back on their feet, we didn't know what shape we'd be in. And again, because of good financial guidance, again, from the council and the administration, we were lucky enough to find the money to bring it in at a slight decrease, which again is like kind of like hard to do in a year of a pandemic. So again, you'll be getting that, and there is a grace period extended for the taxes. The sewer bills did go out. Both are due August 1st. The sewer bills did go out on time, so that grace period, I believe, is 10 days. And I think right now, the grace period for the taxes are going to be 25 days when they go out. I don't think they've gone out yet, or if they went out maybe today. And then as far as the other questions, Rita, I don't know if you want to answer. And Rita, I'm going to tell you truthfully, I, somebody's going to have to give me an inscription of that plaque. I've never read it, so I don't know if it says, this is 810, 812 Cookman Avenue.
You wasn't there.
I know, and I've never read the inscription, so I'll look into that. I'll look into that.
I think everybody in this room that's a taxpayer should start calling to the school board meetings, because that's where all the money is going to go, the tax money. Because they're peeling down, and they're getting less, and we're getting it put on us. Between that and the nonprofit buildings in this city, what is it, 82 or 83 don't pay taxes? Something's got to give here. We have to all start pitching together and go to those school meetings.
Thank you, Rita.
So I'll just follow up on that. It is the city's discretion to put a plaque in any public park. If the plaque is misleading or is not in the appropriate place, the city can reconsider it or relocate it, but it's within the city council's discretion to determine to put a plaque in a public park. So you may disagree with it, but it's the council's determination to make. With regard to the event that was held, it's my understanding that there was no council meeting in time in order for the event to be formally approved as part of the special event process before the council. This is not the first time this has happened. A poll is taken.
What was the last?
I'm not aware of what the circumstances were. All I know is that there was no council meeting in between. A determination by the Special Events Committee was made that they were recommending the event. A determination was made that it would be placed on the first council meeting following the event to ratify the granting of the special event permit. There's nothing wrong with that, and as I mentioned, it's not the first time that that has happened. Sometimes events come up on short notice, and everyone feels it's a worthwhile event and supports it, and rather make it wait until after a council meeting. The event is allowed to proceed with the understanding that the matter will be ratified at the next council meeting thereafter.
Thank you.
That's okay. The plaque is okay, but put it where it belongs.
Okay, Rita, like, we'll look into that to see if it's misleading on what it says. Anybody else?
Okay, can I speak with my mask off or leave it on?
Yes, sir, you can.
I have vaccinations. Ernest McGholy, 710 Northeast, 7th Street, Pointon Beach, Florida. So again, I come here, you know, from Florida because I'm still interested in buying a place here for part-time, but I have to tell you, every time I listen to the city manager or the mayor or the city attorney, they come up with these statements that have no basis in fact. I opened all the documents for that event, right? First of all, it's at the wrong address. Second of all, it was done the day of. Third of all, the sign had no permit. Fourth of all, the reasons that they gave for doing it in the apology has nothing to do with what the owner of the paddock lounge went to federal prison for. He was a drug dealer. And you change this whole narrative into something that it had nothing to do with anything, and who could stop anybody? You had the Attorney General there apologizing, and he doesn't even know what happened. He thinks the paddock was there. He thinks it was because it was whatever, LGBT. That's not, the owner went to federal prison, he was a drug dealer. You know, and everything the city attorney, he's just so fancy and covering everything up. All this, that, you know, Ann Selbrem Aaron knows everything that's going on here, including Operation Bid Rig, including all these rotten contracts, and including the way they threaten people at meetings. They're going to sue me, I'm a liar, I'm crazy, I'm on drugs. Really? Let's look at his boss's record in Long Branch and Asbury. You talk about somebody with drugs and crime with Solomon Dweck in their office in Ocean, right? How about that? And still, you let the city attorney pepper me here, say horrible things. You say horrible things. Who didn't go to prison? You tell me. Did Terrence Welden, the city manager, go to federal prison? Yes, he did. Did Hamilton? Yes, he did. Did condos? Yes, he did. Did the Mayor Sanders go? Yes, he did. Did the, did the head of housing, homes go? Yes, he did. And what did your city attorney say last week? Oh, nothing's ever happened since we're here. They were there before, during, and after Operation Bid Rig. You know what I mean? You're pumping the public with, with things that are not facts, and you're covering it up, and you use these meetings to cover it up, and it's just, it's defiling. I don't know how you get away with it. And the other thing is, why won't the state come in here and do an Operation Bid Rig 2? Why not? We need one badly here. Why won't they? Because if you look at what you're all involved in with the commissioners, with the sheriff, with the prosecutor, with the attorney, you got everything down so that no matter what you do, or what these developers do, or the developers whose family commits crimes, international crimes, and what do you do? You still do business with them.
Time's up.
Hey, let me just correct you on one thing. Usually I correct you. Mayor Sanders never went to jail. It was Mayor Saunders.
That's what I meant.
Well, what you meant and what you say is usually two different things, so thank you.
I was going to say the other people.
You're done, you're done, sir. Next.
Good evening. My name's Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. I'm here tonight to share with you information about an organization called DreamFoundation.org that I have the pleasure and honor of serving on as a board member. DreamFoundation.org. DreamFoundation.org provides end-of-life dreams to terminally ill adults who don't have the resources to meet their needs during their terminally ill last days. I know this isn't a very cheery subject. And I'm up here at this microphone because short of taking out an advertisement publicly, which is not in good taste, I wanted to just invite community members here to learn about DreamFoundation.org. Today, 3 o'clock, I was part of a team that did what's called a dream delivery, which is where we deliver the dream to the applicant or dream recipient. Today, a 30-year-old woman named Melissa Diaz received an adjustable bed because of the complications from her illness. She's diagnosed with terminal lung cancer and has six months left to live. And because of the complications with her illness, has trouble sleeping unless she's on an adjustable bed. DreamFoundation.org provided her with an adjustable bed. She is not within our community here in Asbury Park, and I wanted to invite those of us who are here tonight to please reach out and let me know if there are any members of our community here in Asbury Park that are facing the challenges of a terminally ill diagnosis. And I can help process an application to DreamFoundation.org and see if there is a way to grant a dream to the applicant. And so you can go to the website, DreamFoundation.org, or those of you who may know somebody, please reach out to me personally at peter@rentjerseysure.com, if you don't already have my contact information. And I'd be happy to help process an application for anybody who's among us in our community that needs help. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And should we have him get in touch with Doug?
Sure, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Siegel, you could reach out to Doug Schultz, our social services director, and he may be able to identify any members in the community that need the assistance. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Andrea Goldman. I live on 307th Avenue. These would be, I guess, would have been comments that I wanted to make two weeks ago, but I missed public comment. I just want to say that you guys know that a big portion of the town lives in poverty. And when their employers choose not to pay a living wage, when their landlords choose to keep raising rents, the only people who can step in and change things are the people who have power in a policy level, which is you guys, and higher level too, but you guys can do things as a town. And the policy of the rent control that we have right now is under your purview. And you guys made a really big deal out of saying that your legislation could be changed at any time, especially in contrast to the one the Housing Committee put up. So I'm just wondering if you're planning on making those changes now before the next meeting, such as fixing all the issues that people brought up two weeks ago. And I just want to point out that, and this is not in response to the thing the last person said specifically, but you know, there's a lot of charities that have been popping up in our area in the past year or two. And you know, the only reason the US has so many charities is because we don't take care of people here, right? We just rely on like specific people who already have money. Instead of paying taxes, they just do charities. And that's not okay. We have to do something, and you guys can do it. And we're expecting you to, and when you say you can change your legislation at any time, well, you have to do it now. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. And there's no changes for tonight's agenda. That doesn't mean there won't be any two weeks from now or two months from now.
I'm referring to the housing ordinance.
Rental.
Yeah, right, to do it before the next rent control meeting, right? To make the changes that people spoke of two weeks ago.
Well, this is the last meeting before the next rent control meeting, so no, that's not going to happen.
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is that we are moving up an alternate and appointing a new member, if that's what you're talking about.
Among other things, yeah, yeah. So you have started making changes.
Okay.
There's change on the agenda tonight.
And to the ordinance itself?
Nothing on that agenda tonight about changing the ordinance.
Thanks. You should. You can. So you guys are the only ones who can do it. Please do.
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons. Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. I didn't want to, but I had to add in, when she speaks about specific changes that could be made, that need to be made, or the ordinance that is on the books now leaves out almost a third of the town. Anyone in housing 5 and below, which is most of the town, which is most of the West Side, almost all of the West Side. There's only maybe four buildings on the West Side that actually fit into that criteria. So that means most of the West Side, which are families, which are people that live under the poverty line, are left out of this ordinance, which are the hardest hit, which are the ones needed. And speaking of things that we can do, speaking specifically about that ordinance, and looking for funding or other things to help bring those up to standard. Yesterday, Governor Murphy had a meeting on how to allocate the next $4.2 billion for the state of New Jersey over the next few years. I had the honor of testifying in this meeting about needs to this area and needs to New Jersey. Some of the things that was echoed through the other panelists at the time, or about 20 to 30 others, was rent control, rent ordinances, specific needs for migrant workers and undocumented workers, undocumented residents here in New Jersey. And all of those people are in need in this town, in need right now. So if we look into the funding sources which are already allocated through the American Cares Act, we can use those assistance and that funding to kind of help bring a difference to the people of the town right here and right now, and help bring a quality of life change to everyone in this town who are suffering from mental health illness, mental health breaks, violence, and other things. So I'm just looking in this time for council, you can look into these things as policymakers, enroll those different things out. So again, thank you, and I have 50 seconds.
Okay. Thank you, Felicia. Anyone else?
Motion to close?
Move to close.
Second? Do I have a second to close? All in favor? The meeting is now closed to the public. We are on two minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting, minutes of July 14th, the 4:00 p.m. Municipal council regular meeting minutes, July 14th, 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have Resolution 2021-347 through 2021-349. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to individual resolutions. The first individual resolution we have is 2021-351, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution 2021-325, a resolution for an emergency contract for the mold remediation at the fire department.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-326, a resolution awarding a contract to Precise Construction, Inc. for Sunset Lake Park improvements.
No big deal, but I got total different numbers than you.
It's 2021-353, Melody, I believe.
It is 3, I'm sorry. 2021-353, a resolution awarding a contract to Precise Construction, Inc. for Sunset Lake Park improvements.
Second?
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-354, a resolution amending the contract with Ingenuity Infrastructure, LLC for the design of the city wayfinding signage.
Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2021-355, a resolution authorizing the purchase of police body worn cameras.
Move it. Second?
Question. Michael, I know I have some questions. I know this is through grants, so no problem with the money. 120, I know we don't have 120 police officers, and the old ones aren't that old. What are we doing with them?
They will be auctioned off, is my understanding, yeah.
Okay. And 120 are for backups or what?
Extras for the police department, yeah. And the purchase is covered by the grant that was issued by the state.
Continue with the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2021-356, a resolution authorizing the purchase of high-pressure lifting airbags for the fire department.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-357, a resolution authorizing the purchase of parts needed to repair RBC rotating biological contractor number four at the sewer plant. Do I have a motion? Second? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-358, a resolution authorizing the emergency professional service contract for the assistance and guidance of structural evaluations at Convention Hall and Monroe Towers Apartments.
Move it. Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-359, a resolution authorizing payment for emergency repairs to a ladder truck at the fire department.
Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2021-360, a resolution authorizing transmission repairs to Kubota Number 64 at the Department of Public Works.
Move it.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-361, a resolution authorizing contact tank cleaning at the sewer plant.
Move it. Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-362, a resolution to approve a place-to-place liquor license transfer, a reduction in premises for AP30 Property Holdings, LLC, de-licensing of the beach area.
Move it. Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-363, a resolution approving change order number six for bridge and Heck Street improvements.
Move it.
Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-364, a resolution confirming the terms of the regular members of the rent leveling board and appointing alternate members to the board. We are appointing Nadia Fontaine for a regular member and Jack Daly as alternate number two.
Are the, did the women leave who talked about the rent control board? They already left? Okay.
Move it. Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2021-365, a resolution authorizing payment to Asbury Park Small Businesses through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, CV Care Act Funds.
Move it. Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and if I just may say, so if there's somebody out there, there's still money available for small businesses. You have to have 10 employees or less, and it's kind of like scary to me that we started this June 1st and we can't give away the money. So there's still money available. If anybody knows a business, please put in your application. You can pick up a hard copy. Don't do it online. You can get it from Cassandra Dickerson. And again, there's about six or seven left that can be given out. Thank you.
We're on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction, we have ordinance 2021-30, an ordinance amending the Central Business District redevelopment plan to permit microbreweries on Block 2404 on Cookman Avenue between Bond Street and Press Plaza with a public hearing date of August 11th.
Move it.
Second?
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? The meeting is now adjourned.